Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, June 11, 2019, little after 7:00 here in the City Council chambers. We are going to begin tonight with a -- we're going to stand for a moment of silent prayer, meditation, and then we will lead right into the Pledge of Allegiance after that, that I will lead, so please rise, let's do that. All right, thank you very much. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Holtz, Commissioner Hing, Commissioner Kennedy, Commissioner Haques, and Chairman Redholtz.
Here. We're hoping that Commissioner Holtz is able to join us a little later. Next item is the approval of minutes for the regular meeting on May 28, 2019. Any commissioners have any changes they want to make to those minutes? Hearing none, those minutes are approved as presented. The next item is oral communications. This is when any member of the public can speak to the commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the commission relating to non-agendized or concerned calendar items. I have no cards, so we can probably dispense with that at this point. And we'll move on to public hearings. We have two public hearings scheduled tonight. The first one is item number two. It's a conditional use permit, number 1907, 19-07, slight modification, number 19-01, Subcommittee for Design Review, number 19-25, and categorical exemption. The applicant is Arthur Fong. The location is 2412 West Cedarwood Street. Mr. Director, who will be giving the staff report?
Our planning assistant, Renee Aguilar, will be presenting that.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and fellow Planning Commissioners. Tonight I will be presenting conditional use permit number 19-07. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit for the construction of a 1,206-square-foot second-story addition and a 200-square-foot single-story addition to the existing 1,400 square-foot single-story, single-family residence. The proposed house will have a total floor area of 2,651 square feet, and the applicant is also requesting a slight modification to encroach into the required 25-foot front-yard setback. Behind me, you see an aerial of the subject property highlighted in orange, and, as I mentioned, the slight modification will -- includes an encroachment of 2 feet 6 inches into the required 25-foot setback. The project did go through -- was reviewed by the Design Review Board. And behind me, you see a picture of the existing house. As I mentioned, it's a 1,400-square-foot single-story to be remodeled with three bedrooms that are existing and two bathrooms. Moving on to the site plan. Beginning with the slight modification, as you can see before even going into that, the house right now is currently legal, non-conforming because it is not -- it does not meet the 25-foot front-yard setback. The slight modification is for a front porch that would be 22 feet 4 inches from the front property line, and as you can see, the house right now would even -- would stick out further, closer into the front setback more than the front porch itself that is being proposed. The dash lines resemble the second-story addition, and below that second-story addition in the back would be the three-car -- the new three-car garage. And here is the existing floor plan. As I mentioned, three bedrooms, 1, 2, 3, kitchen, dining room, living area, and two This is the proposed floor plan. As you can see, there's a new three-car garage, as well as -- well, we would have just one bedroom on the first floor, and the other five bedrooms would be on the second floor. There is a kitchen and dining room expansion. Then here we have the proposed second-floor plan with five bedrooms and two bathrooms. And as I mentioned before, this second floor -- let me just point this out. These two bedrooms here would be directly above the proposed three-car garage. Planning staff has conducted a neighborhood survey of roughly about 20 homes, just to give some context of what is existing. So the mean lot size in that area is 7,347 square feet with a floor area of 1,796, and the mean floor area ratio is 25 percent. And then below that is the median. The subject proposal for tonight is requesting a floor area of 3,464 square feet with a floor area ratio of 53 percent, and that includes the 788-square-foot garage, the first floor. That is 1,206 square feet. I'm sorry, the second floor would be the 1,206 square feet and the existing 1,400-square-foot first floor. The house as proposed would be one point times larger than the average size of the surrounding surveyed homes. This would be the side elevation, the north elevation. This would be the south elevation, which is as well as a side elevation. I just want to point out that the front door is not going to be facing the street. It's actually going to be facing -- I'm sorry, just a sec. Yes, it will be facing the street. Here is the front elevation. The applicant is proposing stone veneer to the front elevation, and it will wrap around the side. This would be the rear elevation, also the west elevation. Here is a summary of the existing in comparison to the proposed. First floor, 45 square feet of a change, so you can see that there is no second floor existing. The proposed would be 1,206 square feet. The garage used to be -- is currently 380 square feet, and the proposed would be 788. And we covered floor ratio. Existing is 27 percent, and it increased to 53 percent. Lot coverage, 27 percent, and proposed would be 35 percent. In conclusion, the applicant is requesting to construct a new 3,400-square-foot two-story house, including a 788-square-foot three-car garage, the slight modification to encroach into the required 25-foot setback. And I'd like to point out that the neighborhood does consist of one-story homes as well as one other existing two-story home. And that two-story home was permitted -- it was a one-story home that was permitted to construct a second-story home back in 1993. And then we do have two windows on the north side elevation that present potential impacts for the immediate adjacent neighbor. With that being said, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution approving conditional use permit 19-07, slight modification number 19-01, and Subcommittee Design Review 19-25. That concludes my presentation. The applicant is here if you -- if the Planning Commission does have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee. Any questions of staff based on what we just heard? Was there any letters of concern or emails from anybody?
No, no, there was one letter, but really it was just a letter of concern for the slight modification. After I explained to the neighbor that the existing house is currently projecting into the front setback, the concerned neighbor realized that the impact was very minimal. And then there was the immediate adjacent neighbor, but he never submitted anything.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fong, would you like to come up and tell us about the project, please?
Hi. I'm the project architect. Unfortunately, the property owner couldn't join us tonight. You know, I just wanted to take this time really to thank staff for their insight and their guidance on the project. What we ended up with is a lot different from what we had originally proposed. The client has a really big family, so she wants to have the space that's, you know, that's a house that's able to accommodate all her children. That's why we kind of landed on the size that we have. And in terms of the aesthetics, she has a very, you know, very specific sensibility. So again, keeping that in mind with also budget constraints, we kind of -- this is the design that we landed on.
How long is the -- is the client -- is your client the current resident of the house?
She's the property owner, yes.
The property owner, okay. And do you know how long she's lived there?
Geez, at least over 10 years.
Over 10 years.
Yeah. I have a question.
Commissioner Kennedy?
So what's the deal with the two closets in each bedroom? That doesn't look good.
Yeah. What you guys see here is actually absolutely what she wants. I've done different schemes to kind of mitigate, you know, some of the more awkward spaces, but in the end, you know, she didn't like any of the schemes, the alternate schemes that were proposed. So what, you know, what you see before you is every window placement, every door placement, every room adjacency is absolutely exactly what she wants.
I'm not good with two closets in one room because down the line, all you're going to do is put a partition in between it and turn it into two rooms. That's how it's usually done.
Sheena?
How big is the room?
I haven't looked at the drawings in a while, so, yeah, yeah. So the minimum width we tried to maintain was at least 10 feet.
13 by 10?
There's some variety, but generally 13 by 10.
So Bedroom 5 is 130 square feet.
Yeah, I think 2, 3, and 5 are all about the same size. So is 4, it's a little bit different dimensions. 6 is maybe a little bit bigger, and 1 is maybe a little bit bigger.
Some rooms are not that big.
Yeah, that would be mine. I don't think they're overly large.
Rooms are relatively small. I mean, we can ask our architect to work with you to see if it's okay to just -- regardless of the closet, if that's just the only issues, if it's possible just to extend into the whole closet and have the middle divider.
Yeah, you know, I have to consult my client, I'm the architect, so.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, I think we had worked with Renee to try to fine-tune some different areas in the house, but like I said, ultimately, you know, this is what she wanted.
How many people are living in the house now?
She has six kids, so it's her, six kids, and a fiancee, who, so.
Kind of crowded right now.
Yeah.
And on Bedroom 3, you know, all the other bedrooms, it indicates CLO for closet. On Bedroom 3, there's just the space there. I assume that's another closet in Bedroom 3 at the lower right-hand corner?
Yes, yes.
And that closet doesn't indicate any -- there's no divider there, so.
Yeah.
It's just them's big closets, so, you know. Okay, let's talk about the drive approach for the three-car garage. It's interesting that, you know, the approach is, you know, you don't pull in the driveway, pull right into the garage, you've got to pull in and go down and then kind of negotiate turns there. Is there adequate turning area there to back in, back out without, you know, hitting the wall or the house?
I believe so. 26 feet is usually.
26 feet?
Yeah, pretty standard for backup space.
Okay.
Also, the building -- sorry. I believe also the building department will check that part out as well.
Well, that's mostly a planning function.
A planning function.
Yeah, 26 feet.
I see.
26, 25 is generally where our backup space requirements.
And let me -- have you or the owner done any outreach to the neighbors?
It was suggested to us, and then I, you know, I was open to the opportunity, you know, to reach out to the immediate neighbors. I don't know if Paulie ever reached out to them.
I mean, we're here now, so it's -- but it's always a good idea to do that, you know, to reach out, especially with a major change to the neighborhood.
Right.
You know, I mean, that's -- those houses have been there for a very long time, and it's pretty established, and this is a big change. So, you know, it would have been a good idea to, you know, talk to them and try and get them on board, you know. I mean, they were all noticed, right? I mean, the neighborhood was noticed, and it's interesting that no one's here either, Any other questions? Mr. Holtz has arrived. Commissioner Holtz has arrived. Welcome, sir. So no questions? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Just a quick point on the notices. 54 notices were sent out. We did get some response. I mean, Renee was talking about some of the people that contacted us, they just didn't submit any letters.
Okay, so there was contact?
Yeah, the two neighbors.
Yes, I had two people come to the front counter and showed them the plans.
Commissioner Hing, something? All right. Okay, I'll go ahead and close the public testimony portion of the public hearing, and we'll have commission discussion on this item. Who would like to go first?
Well, I guess I'll go first with -- it's -- I'm going to have to actually refer back to staff.
Sure.
And what Renee mentioned about the other two-story home in the neighborhood, that was permitted -- was it permitted for an addition of a second story in 1993?
Yes, it was. And it was -- I'd like to point out that it was before there was a design Subcommittee -- Subcommittee Design Review.
Fair enough. But in that case, did you have the numbers on -- any numbers on that particular two-story home in terms of FAR and lot coverage?
I don't have lot coverage or FAR, but I do have the building permit that was -- the building permit was issued in 1989, finalled in 1993, and the second-story addition was 1,827 square feet.
Okay. And is there any information on how many bedrooms it added?
Not in this building permit application.
Okay. That's all.
Yes, Commissioner Hing?
Renee, can you repeat that again? So the second story addition is 1,180 square foot?
Are you talking about tonight's project?
No.
Oh, no, 1,827. There is a second-story house, an existing second-story house that is, I want to say, five houses down the street.
I know, but I'm just curious in terms of the second-story addition. It's 1,827?
Yes, that is what the building permit application says here.
Gotcha. So this particular one, the second story, is 1,200?
Yes, 1,206 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Okay, so what is the pleasure of the commission at this point? Commissioner Holtz, are you -- I know you're here, yes. I see you. Any questions or?
Fairness to the applicant.
Put the mic on, Don, please.
Fairness to the applicant. I have not had a chance to review this or to go by the property, so I'm going to reclusive myself from this issue.
All right, just, I'll make a couple of comments here. I have -- I'm a little concerned about the privacy issues on the north elevation with those windows there. Right there. Yeah. I don't know how the other commissioners feel about that, but that really is directly impacting the one -- apparently, we heard from that one neighbor, and I'm not surprised that we heard from him since he's the one with the most impacts to his property. And, you know, if I was living there, I'd be concerned about that. I mean, that really -- and there's a way, you know, there's a way to resolve that, you know, you do the, you know, relocate them or, you know, clear story windows or what have you, but I have a concern about that, so.
Renee, can you bring that window up again? Okay, so your concern is the two, the second two stories that are the bigger one, it appears.
Right.
The little one seems like it's on top of the bathroom.
Little ones are fine, yeah. It's those two.
Can we ask our architect, are those egress, ingress windows?
You have to come up. Mr. Fong, yeah, I'm sorry, you have to come back up.
While he's coming up, I can respond to that, yeah. The bigger ones are egress windows now.
So on the top portion to the right is egress, ingress. That's basically required by law if you have a second bathroom, I mean, the bedrooms.
Well, you're required by law to have a window of that size. It doesn't necessarily have to be on a specific elevation.
But if Renee can go to the second floor. So. That window on the right, that's really the only place we can -- on that wall, that's really the only place we can place the window.
Yeah, so point out Bedroom number 2, just so. So that's Bedroom number 2. Now, see, that has an egress window on the north elevation, but as Albert is referring to, that could be relocated to the front elevation. Can you show him which one that is? I mean, no, on the, with your, with the pointer. Yeah, so he could redesign the closets and move that window to the front elevation, correct?
If we moved the window to the front to meet the open space requirement, you know, when the window's open for egress, well, it probably would interfere with.
The roof.
Yeah, with the roof, so we'll have to do a table.
So in other words, it's a bit of a redesign. It can be done, but it's a bit of a redesign. Now, to move to the other one, so the, as with most of this, it's not necessarily simple changes, right? These are not simple changes. They may be important, but they're not necessarily simple. So that window could be moved with some changes to the design. The other window on Bedroom 5 is more problematic because it only has the one elevation that it's adjacent to, so it couldn't be moved and be a bedroom. I mean, it'd have to be, it has to have that egress window on that elevation, or they'd have to redesign the floor plan.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any concerns about that? Or was?
Yeah, I have major -- I, yeah, I have major concerns about that, too. If I was the guy that lived behind him, I don't think I'd be very happy either.
So it doesn't sound like there's a real easy solution for that. Okay, any other discussion? Commissioner Haques?
Just one other question to refresh my memory on the maximum percentage for lot coverage allowable.
35 percent is the maximum allowed lot coverage.
So what I've heard is that there may be two concerns. One is the design of the closets, and one is the windows. So I think maybe if you, if the commission, and it sounds like it's going to be four people voting tonight on that, if the commission would like to ask for a redesign, you should probably ask the applicant if he's willing to redesign to try to, and then maybe have a discussion about what to redesign to achieve what.
I think I like, I think I like that if our commissioners decided to either redesign or look into regarding the rearrangement of the closet. It's going to be really tough for the windows, so, for the closet.
Any other comments?
In addition to the issue of the windows, and I'll just reiterate what Chairman Redholtz said about this being a project that has, will have a very large impact on this neighborhood, mainly because it's such, the scale of the addition is what it is. And being that there has been, you know, notice made to residents and neighbors by the city, I like your, what you had to say about the, you know, the effort made by the property owner to notice, you know, get in touch with their neighbors. I think in some respects, that's probably more important than the notice that comes from the city because they are this property owner's neighbor. And I would want to be sure that for something of this scale and the impact that that has, that the neighbors have a, you know, direct communication with the property owner about that potential impact. I mean, just if I could see the front elevation again, just to point that out. That's a, that's a pretty, that's a pretty sizable vertical change to look at in a neighborhood that's predominantly single-family homes. And, you know, I would really want to impress them on, that property owner, to get in touch with those neighbors and really make this particular fact known about what their project involves. People just sometimes will pay attention, and I think that, you know, I want to be sure that we aren't really getting a, you know, we aren't really getting the feedback that we might otherwise get if there was a better effort on the part of the property owner to communicate with their neighbors. I'd like to see that happen.
Okay, let me, let me see if I can summarize just a little bit. I agree with you 100 percent, and you're agreeing with me on that. You know, I think we need to discuss two things. One, if we want to give them direction to do a redesign, that's one thing, because the other thing, frankly, they're not required to inform their neighbors. I mean, it's the nice courteous thing to do, but there's no requirement to do that. So my thinking is, in conjunction with the redesign request, they could also, at that point, talk to the neighbors, because in my view, this house is too big for the neighborhood.
That's, yeah, you went there first, and I wouldn't, I have to agree. This house is too big.
I mean, it's too big for the neighborhood. I mean, you know, you go out there and you look at the houses that are there, I mean, it's just, it's just too big for the neighborhood. And, you know, if I was living out there, and I agree with what you said, too, you know, these notices come in the mail, and, okay, what the heck is this? Or somebody throws it out. I mean, I understand we can't, you know, walk up there and hand it to them and say, read this, let me know when you're done, you know, we can't do that. But at the same time, this is a big change to their home and their environment. And, you know, I'm, I'll tell you what, I'm a little disappointed in two things. Number one, I'm disappointed that the owner isn't here. I would have liked to have been able to talk to her and ask her questions, and to her and ask her questions. And I'm also disappointed that there wasn't any outreach effort made at all. You know, I mean, I'm more concerned that there's no outreach. I mean, maybe she can be here, maybe not. I mean, the, the representative, you know, the architect is here, which is, you know, what is, he's the applicant, so. But I do have those concerns, but I think we need to let them know what we're looking for in a redesign. Yeah, at the very least. Commissioner Kennedy?
Yeah. Just, you know, I, I, I concur. I, I feel the house is too big for the neighborhood. You know, when I was growing up, I used to know most of the people that lived on that street. And then went down there the other day, and all of a sudden I come across this house, said, where, where did this come from? You know, it's, it's, I think it's twenty-four, thirty-five cedar wood. This big gigantic two-story home that would never pass today if it came in front of us. It's, it's huge. And, and it actually kind of destroys the neighborhood. And, and I, I also feel that this is a little bit too big for the neighborhood. Think if they scale it down, I could be good with it.
Okay, any other comments? I mean, we have to give them something to, to go back with.
Yeah, I think that the, the thing to do is, you need to ask the applicant if he's willing to accept a continuance to look at redesign. And I think we need, when you, when you ask for redesign, you know, we, we should be clear what we're looking for, not just make it smaller because then they come back, well, that's not small enough, or that's too much, now you got to go back. So we need to be clear about, you know, what, how much too big. It's, it's one point nine times larger than the average house. I don't know that we have the size of the other large house, so to compare it to, but, you know, you, you could do it by that percentage, by one point eight, one point seven five, you know, lower that, or you could give them a, a straight square footage that you're comfortable with. But I think, and, and there's a, also a little bit ballpark, because they're probably going to want to try to continue to keep the six bedrooms. I think that there's a reason why they're trying to do that. And keep in mind, one thing that's unclear, I think, a lot of times in our discussions, is that when we talk about the house size, we include the garage. So when you talk to a realtor, they don't include the garage. So part of the reason that this is so much bigger is because they have a three-car garage. They're required to have a three-car garage. All the other houses around have a two-car garage. So almost three hundred square feet of the additional size is the garage. So that's something to keep in mind as well. And then the, the other two things you, again, to reiterate, you talked about is, is the windows on the north elevation and the dual closets. I think those are the three issues that I've heard you, the commission, discuss. So I think it may be appropriate to have the applicant come forward and talk to him about, give direction on a redesign.
Mr. Fong, go forward, please.
Hi.
What are your thoughts on what you've heard?
You know, on one level, it makes a lot of sense to me, but ultimately, you know, I, I do as instructed by my client, and I have to keep her, her, you know, her goals and her best interests in mind during, you know, when I, whenever I, I design her work. So, you know, again, it's unfortunate that she can't be here. If she can make that decision, that'd be great. If maybe, I don't know.
I think the question before you, right now, Albert, is, will you accept a continuance to discuss redesign?
Okay.
I think that's what they're asking.
Yeah, that's exactly, yeah, that's what we're looking, that's the question and the answer. So, I mean, frankly speaking, I mean, I'd like to continue it. I mean, the, I don't know about how specific we, we want to get. We have to give them something, but I would like to continue it and so the owner could be here, too, so we could discuss these changes.
Now, when we talk, I, I know I'm confused in this situation, we'll get back to what, what the issues at hand are, but there's another issue at hand is, is when we, when we schedule the, if we're going to, if we're going to talk about redesign, it's probably best not to schedule the, the time when the hearing will be. Leave it up to them, and that way we could, we would, that would require us to renotice it as well. So that's part of the issue as well, would be renotice, and that might help some of you with, with your thought process here, because it'll be noticed twice. And then Albert can go work with a client, and at their leisure, or at their convenience, they can come back and let us know, here's where we want to go, and then we can schedule, do the noticing. That would be the best way to go about this. But again, I think I would suggest that the commissioners who are discussing it, you know, look at the idea of what is acceptable for the north windows, north elevation windows, what's acceptable for the closets, and what, at least in a general way, what, what'd be acceptable in terms of size.
Okay, Commissioner Hing, you have a comment?
I don't really have a comment. I mean, if two closets is an issue, one closet works the same, you're just storing clothes. As suggestions, I don't know. To the client. Regarding windows, it's tough for the second bedrooms. I understand that's egress, and it's not that the clients, it can't just make that window disappear because they require by laws to have an egress, ingress windows. So I have no idea.
That's going to solve itself. If we're, if we're going to be required to reduce the square footage, then I think necessarily a bedroom is going to have to be gone.
What was that? I didn't really hear that.
Say that again to them, Albert.
Oh, the bedroom.
Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah. If we're, if we're going to have to re, reduce the square footage of the house, I think just by definition, we're going to have to remove a bedroom, so that, you know, that might just solve itself in the end.
I think what, what he's thinking is that bedroom number five disappears or combines with bedroom number six, so it's one large room, and then you have, you have options with the window.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, you know, that would mitigate to me. Any other comments, or do we want to? Sounds like there's direction there.
Maybe, I think, I think we're getting direction. It, it sounds to me like there's maybe some little bit of leeway on the closets, maybe some, but I think the real issue is the size and the windows. So I think the, it sounds like the mission would like to direct them to reduce all windows on the north elevation to clear stories or smaller fixed windows, that kind of thing. And then secondarily, to redesign the house to, I'm just going to throw out a number, to reduce it by two hundred, two hundred square feet or so, approximately two hundred square feet. And if that's the case, then I think what you should do is have a motion in a second and request that the applicant redesign to these specifications.
Is there a motion?
I'll motion to.
A motion by Hing to continue it to a date uncertain, correct?
Correct.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a second by Kennedy.
And just to state for the record, the continuance, so it will be renoticed because it's a date uncertain. The windows on the north elevation should be reduced to clear story or small fixed windows, and the house should be reduced by approximately two hundred square feet. Are you acceptable to that, Sheena?
And the closets?
And the closets?
I'm okay with the closet.
Okay. All right, I think that's it. So let's have a roll call on the motion, please.
I'm going to, at Commissioner Holt's request, I will skip him. Commissioner Hing?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hockes?
Aye.
And Chairman Reddell.
Aye. So that motion passes four zero. Thank you, sir. We'll see you back. And I know it's not part of that, but I would, I would suggest that you do some community outreach to the, to the neighbors.
Okay.
While you have this, this time. And, and when we do have a meeting scheduled, perhaps the owner could be here for that.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is item number three, which is a film permit, number nineteen dash zero five, major production, general exemption. The applicant is section five at six twenty-one Reedy Way. Mr. Director, report, please.
Our planning manager, Joanne Burns, will present the report.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the Planning Commission, and also members of the public. Before I begin with my presentation, I just wanted to note that this is the first film permit that the Planning Commission is going to hear in, in a, probably more than ten years. And this is because you, typically, film permits are processed administratively because normal film permits have limits with, on how long you can film within residential properties and also commercial properties. And the, these limits are three days in residential properties, and as long as filming is not after nine P.M. And on commercial properties, it's five days. And so most of the filming in the city are commercial, are TV commercials and also television series. And so with that type of filming, we don't get this, a, a long notice. This, the application comes in like two weeks in advance, and we'd have to process it. So a lot of times, filming for longer than the three days in residential is often turned down or not accepted because of this. And in this, this particular application is, was submitted to us months in advance, so we are able to process it the major production film permit type of way. So this application is under Planning Commission review because it's considered a major production under the West Covina Municipal Code, because filming is going to be held in residential after nine P.M. and also for more than three days. The applicant is requesting to film on the property from July twenty-ninth, two thousand nineteen, to August eighth, two thousand nineteen. The property is located on six twenty-one Reedy Way. Reedy, six twenty-one Reedy Way is a three-point-four acre flag lot with approximately thirty feet of street frontage, located on the west side of Reedy Way, approximately two hundred feet from the terminus of the Reedy, Reedy Way cul-de-sac. The site is developed with a single-story house designed by renowned modernist architect Richard Nutra. The applicant is proposing to film an independent movie entitled Violet in the interior of the home, along the home's front porch area, and also the backyard swimming pool area. Okay, so this is a photograph of the home's front porch area right along here. And as far as the aerial is concerned, it corresponds to this area here. And then this photograph right along here is a backyard pool area. And as far as the aerial photograph is shown, it is along this area. And then the interior of the house is within this box along the aerial, right along here. The, the, the property itself is screened by shrubs and large trees throughout the site. The proposed filming activity area is located distant and uphill from all the adjacent homes. So the home on the west side, the closest home on the west side, is located approximately one hundred seventy feet from the proposed film location area. The, the neighbor, the closest neighbor on the north side is located approximately ninety feet from the locate, the film location area. And the neighbor on the east side is located approximately a hundred feet away from the film location area. And the neighbor on the south side is located approximately one hundred thirty feet from the film location area. Staff did receive a letter or an email from the, the neighbor right along here, and the, their concern was mostly with noise and also the come, the come and going of vehicles and people. The, the lot itself has a long driveway, and parking is not being proposed on Reedy Way itself. Parking is going to be proposed along the three-hundred-foot-long driveway. The driveway is approximately three hundred feet long and twenty feet wide. And only one side of the driveway, vehicles are only going to be parking on one side of the driveway, and also a parking pad like right along here in some park area, dirt area right along here if, if needed. As far as parking is concerned, if, if not enough parking is available on site, then the applicant would be required to park vehicles in an off-site remote location that is not in a residential area. So that is included in the condition of approval to mitigate any, to mitigate the impacts that the proposed filming is going to have on the residential area. And also, as far as noise is concerned, there is a condition of approval in the draft resolution prohibiting the use of, of public address systems and megaphones. And also, as far as lighting is concerned, in filming at night, there is a condition of approval requiring the applicant to shield any exterior lighting away from the neighboring properties and point, and basically point the lighting towards their, the interior of the lawn and towards the film area. According to the applicant, filming during the evening or at, at night, after hours, is going to be held mostly in, in the interior of the building. And, and also, these are the proposed filming hours. So initially in the application, when it was noticed, the hours were quite, were a little bit different, and only, only requested seven days. But right now, ten days are being, are, the, the application is being updated to ten days. And according to the applicant, they need some, they may need extra time to film at night because they are, they're not able, since the whole entire interior of the house is glass, they're not able to film scenes that are supposed to be at night during the day, because you would be able to see how light it is outside if they film night scenes during the day. So the latest, the nights, the latest, the interior filming or any type of filming is going to take place on the property is at four thirty A.M. But generally, the filming is going to be from seven A.M. till seven P.M., I'm sorry, seven A.M. till ten P.M. Another, another point to mention is that initially, we routed the application to the police department, and the police department requested that two police officers be present on site. However, when the police department was informed that filming is going to take place completely on the property, and parking is going to take place completely on the property, they noted that, that in this particular case, since everything is going to be conducted on the property, a, a police officer presence is, is not going to be required. So there is a condition of approval in, in the draft resolution requiring two police officers to be present for, per the initial conversation with the police department. I would like to amend this condition to state that, that the applicant will work with the police department regarding police, police officer presence, and would be required to provide any police officers on site as necessary, per the determination of the police chief. So that in case if something happens during the filming, and the police department feels that it is a safe, there is going to be a safety issue, the, the police department would be able to have the applicant be required to have the police presence during the filming. With this, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution approving film permit nineteen zero five. If the Planning Commission has any questions, I'm available to answer. Also, the applicant is also present.
Can you show me one more time where six twenty-five is?
Can you show me one more time where 625 is? Reedy?
Right here.
Okay, yeah, I know, I just wanted to see.
Oh, sorry. Right here.
Okay. Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any questions of staff? Commissioner Holtz?
Yeah, I thought I heard you say that the ordinance should only go till 9:00 PM, but everything else was on there was 10:00 PM, so are you making a exception?
Well, there, there are two types of film permits. There is a, the normal film permit that the cities, the city have been receiving is, is basically approved administratively. And that limits filming in residential properties through three days and for, and no, I guess no later than 9:00 PM. But the code also allows filming, um, a major production film permit, um, in the major production type of film permit, um, will allow, does allow filming after 9:00 PM. And it also allows filming for more than three days in a residential because it requires neighbor, neighbor notification. And also, it may require a hearing. So, we're taking it to the planning commission proactively so that we can expedite the process and also request a hearing in case it is necessary.
Okay, we're, and the second question, we're severely understaffed on the police department, as everybody knows. Excuse me. Would security officers, if they hired, would they suffice?
Um, the, the, according to the police department, they, they feel that the, to a police officer presence or police department presence, it would not be necessary if the filming is going to be completely done on site and also the parking is, is going to be completely done on site. However, the applicant is here if, if you have, as far as security is concerned, they may be able to answer security questions.
Okay, so you said that, the police department said there's no police presence necessary?
That's correct.
Oh, I, I didn't understand it, okay. Uh, and the other thing is, and maybe it's a better question for the applicant, if they have a rough percentage of time that's going to be filmed inside versus outside?
The applicant will be able to answer that.
Any other questions of staff before?
Well, I thought she might know, but I'll ask the applicant.
Yeah, I'm gonna, that's what I'm asking, if any other questions, no? Okay. Now, let's invite the applicant up to speak to us, tell us about the project and the movie and all that. Ms. Bateman, please, thank you.
Thank you for having us. I'm Justine Bateman, I'm the writer, director, producer of this film. And this is David Lyons, who's our location manager, um, who usually handles finding houses, permits and, uh, dealing with the neighbor, you know, being the neighborhood contact and all that sort. The scenes that would be shot at this house, first of all, you have an incredible Nutra in West Covina. It's a very, it was very exciting to even find this house. And the house represents, you know, sort of this peaceful portion of the main character's life, so it's, it's significant metaphorically in the film, so it's, we're really happy to have this opportunity to talk about it. Almost all the scenes that take place in this house are, are either one character, the main character Violet, that's played by Olivia Munn, thinking about things and going through, through things emotionally. And then, uh, another portion of the scenes are dialogue between her and the homeowner, who's a childhood friend of hers. His name's Red and it's his house. And almost all those scenes take place inside, in the kitchen, in the bedroom, in the, her single, uh, her scenes alone are mostly in the bedroom. And then, there's one sort of barbecue scene with just a few people. And even during that, there's one scene where she kind of walks through and says hello to people, but the bulk of that scene is her on her own, having this conversation with herself about her, you know, this, her main situation, which is she always makes fear-based decisions. I know this might be too much information for the planning commission, but just so you, I just want to, what's that? I know, right? Just to give you an idea of what the film's about, you know, there's, uh, because it gives you a sense of what scenes will be conducted, you know, it's almost, like I said, almost only one or two characters, um, with the exception of that barbecue scene. There won't be, you know, when we shoot barbecue scenes where there might be music and stuff, it's not at all like when you're actually throwing a party in the neighborhood because you can't actually have the music playing or it would interfere with the dialogue that you're recording. So, it's, this will be quieter than if the neighbor was having a party. We're all very, you know, I know we're calling it a major production and in the fact, in the sense that it's a feature film, it is a major production. But also, what was stated is that this is an independent film. So, that means we have like hustled as hard as possible to get the small budget together. So, the number of people we can hire is small. Everybody, a lot of people will be doing two jobs, you know, it's not one of those films that you'll see in a film where there's cranes and huge lights and all of this. A lot of our lighting is going to be what they call single source practical, which is like a lamp in somebody's living room or something, very natural lighting, or it'll be the natural light that's coming, the daylight that's coming through. So, yeah, that addresses, you know, light issues or, or sound and, and also we'll be there for six days, so there won't be trucks coming in and out, in and out. They'll come, they'll park, and then after six days, they'll leave. So, essentially like, um, yeah, I don't know what to compare that to. It's not even like when somebody's moving in and the truck comes in, unloads everything and leaves because that happens within a day or two, but this is actually quite a, quite a spread between noise of trucks going back and forth. I probably answered more than you were asking, but...
On your handout here, the red work trucks, they're going to be parked there permanently.
They're going to be parked there?
Permanently. I mean, permanently while the film's going on.
And the trucks are not like beacons moving trucks, they're, um, would you say, David, like sort of a U-Haul truck size?
We do have a box truck, we indicate them as three ton, five ton, or 10 ton, depending on how many axles they have. We don't know exactly what the trucks are going to be, but they're box trucks, five ton, 10 ton, depending on how many axles they have. Smaller than a moving truck, bigger than what you or I might run at U-Haul.
What about the, usually they have, not motorhomes, but trailers?
Trails, we haven't come up with 100% of the plan yet, but the idea would be to either keep those off-site or create what we call green rooms on-site where we use a bedroom for getting an actor ready. And honestly, it's a lot easier to just have somebody go to that room than lose them into a trailer.
Okay.
When you're waiting for them to...
And then catering, is that going to be set up each day or are they going to come in and out of there or?
Most likely a drop-off service.
Okay.
And we would have tents and I kind of perused your codes a little bit, the little pop-up tents, as long as they don't exceed, I believe it's 400 square feet, then we don't need a permit for them. And what we do is we provide a three-foot break between the pop-ups to prevent that from happening. Plus, if they're in the shot, we need to move them.
Right. Okay, thank you. And your, Commissioner Holtz, your question about the security or was that answered for you?
There was. I was just asking, do you need security there? Do you want security there?
We technically would bring security and I'm in charge of bringing the security force. I have a licensed security team that I work with. And I've been, I haven't been in touch with Sergeant Brandon Carmen of the West Covina Police Department yet, but we've been playing phone tag.
Okay.
So, it would be my preference not to have the police officers there as I don't know what they would do, but we would have a security force. We also have a SET medic in case of any emergencies, and that's another vehicle that would park on set.
Well, I'm sure they'll do extra patrol anyway, outside.
And we'd love to have them for lunch.
Yeah. Okay. We would never do that. No, 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 not when, not when I was on a PD.
So, you're not going, you're not going to have any Star Wagons out there, huh?
Not likely. That hasn't been discussed yet, but I would do everything to prevent that from happening for several reasons. The biggest one is those are usually dropped and then that truck that drops them goes to pick up something else. And if we need it moved, if it's in the shot, we're, we're done. We're dead in the water.
Yeah.
A good thing about the other trucks, they're on wheels that can move.
And just to, to add to what David said about having like green rooms or setting something up in the, in the house for the actors, like I said, it'd probably be just the two actors with the exception of that barbecue scene. It's a four or five bedroom house and we're only using one of the bedrooms to shoot in so that we do have, you know, good options in the house, there's, there's room to do things like that.
Commissioner Hockes?
Is this, um, property occupied? Someone living there or otherwise?
Yes, the homeowners have been lovely, um, you know, wanting to, wanting to use this in the film. The homeowners are, um, uh, it's a fam, a father, a father and mother. Their adult son lives there and is very excited about this happening, but he's the only occupant and, you know, I think plans on being in the barbecue scene, which is okay. But just, just to answer your question, just, there's just one and he's excited about all of this.
Oh, so he will be present throughout the shooting or?
Right, somebody...
Not going out of town or?
No, and, and that's standard when you're renting somebody's home, that there be some representative. And if it's not the homeowner, then it's, it's somebody that they've designated to, you know, usually it's a production with a lot more people in the crew and a lot more people in the cast, a lot more action in the house, which is not the case here, but still, there's usually representatives to keep their eye on, you know, the furnishings and the walls and all of that, so they're handling that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner Heung? By the way, this is very helpful, I'm glad you brought this...
That was my art project today.
Yeah.
Didn't make press time for the presentation.
David's a keeper, he's doing a good job.
Isn't he?
Yeah. Any other questions?
Is there going to be room for the planning commission?
Well, I, considering we have a limited budget to hire extras, you might be called upon.
Hey, you know, we're...
My grandfather was an old time movie star.
Yeah, his grandfather was a Keystone Cop.
Oh, wow.
Edgar, Edgar Kennedy, worked for Max Senate.
Do you have pictures or any footage?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
He was in all those...
I remember films.
Max Senate.
Gosh.
Three wheelers, two wheelers, wheelers, what'd they call them?
Silver movies and then went to Tockeys, Laurel Hardy on Max Senate, El Roche, all the old school.
You still have your SAG card or, no, I guess not.
If you ever want to tour all those old locations, I know where they are.
Yeah, huh?
Culver City.
Culver City, Silver Lake, that's where the Max Senate stages.
Yeah, stairs, the musical stairs up there and, uh...
Right on Vendo.
So, let me, let me ask you, what's the, how's the film going to be distributed? When?
It's going to be, you know, um, a lot, bigger films will of course be done by studio and they're already going to distribute it. But independent films are generally taken to market, you know, you hear of, there are a lot, there are hundreds of film festivals, but there's just a few that are seller, buyer and seller festivals like Sundance, Cannes, Toronto, there's more, but those are like the three majors. And so, that's the plan. We finish the film, take it to a film, film festival, and then hopefully you generate enough buzz that you get people bidding against each other and get the best price. Yeah.
And we're looking at how much time between, in other words, when will we look forward to come out?
Oh, how long does it take?
Yeah.
It depends on the distributor, it depends on post-production, it depends on the distributor. Because we're ending, we're finishing our, our production shoot pretty close to when Sundance would need to see the film. So, I don't know if we would make that deadline. And if we did, then it would be sold to Sundance and then the distributor would get to decide. It's usually within a year, so I would say, you know, in 20, maybe by the end of... Yeah, yes, good. It's hard to tell because there's also, um, like if Netflix bought it, it would be on pretty soon after.
Right.
But if a theater bought it, there's only so many screens and they have to schedule, you know, who, you know, they have to find an opening in the schedule, right, to have that in. And also, is this coming out in the summer, is it come, or is it more of a fall picture or? So, they do it like, I wish I knew, but those are the considerations.
Yes, Commissioner Holtz?
Just for your own information, the street Reedy Way, that was named after our second officer that was killed in the line of duty.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so I just thought you might know that.
Yeah. Thank you.
This is your first feature or?
It's my first feature, yeah.
You directed TV, didn't you or no?
I've directed two film shorts that are on Amazon if you would like to watch them. One is, if you put my name in, they should come up, but one is a comedy called Five Minutes and the other is a drama called Push. But yes, this is my first feature film. First of many, I hope.
Very good.
Oh, you saw it? Okay.
You're the guy, you saw that.
I was the guy.
One of many.
One of many, yeah. Any...
Thank you, yeah, I, I am very excited. It's a script I wrote in 2011, so I'm happy to, and then I went to college for four years and came back, so it's nice to be able to, you know, make it happen now. And, you know, really exciting to have gotten all the money together, which is a long process, and I'm writing another script about that process because it was kind of crazy. And then to find this house, you know, when we heard about the three-day permit, I was like, oh, okay. And then I looked at some other houses and kept comparing them to this one and I was like, you know what, we just got to do whatever we can possibly do to, to see if we can get an exemption from that three-day restriction because the house is really special, so thank you all for allowing us to meet here.
How did you find this house? I've, I've been on a planning commission for over 10 years.
Oh, really?
I didn't even know it was there.
It, it was through, through a, like a location agency because they, they can make it available pretty readily for that three-day permit, like for a commercial or something. But I was like, oh no, I want to use this for a lot of scenes in here, yeah.
I'm glad I never got a call to go there when I was on the police department, I never would have found it.
Oh, really?
It's a, it's a beautiful home. It's a beautiful home, uh, one point before they built all those houses around there on, on Reedy Way in the eighties, that was the only house on that street.
Really?
And I don't recall the name of the street. They renamed it after Officer Reedy was, was, was killed. Yeah, but that was the only street, that was the only house on the street. It's a beautiful, beautiful, beautiful home. It's like one of a kind, yeah.
I, I think so too, especially its size for one, because most of them, those mid-century homes by Nutra were, you know, rather smallish. If you, if you, because there's only one Nutra in West Covina, if you Google West Covina Nutra, you can see pictures of, you know, all kinds of interior pictures of the house. There's some before and after pictures too that are pretty striking.
And West Covina is going to be in the credits?
You betcha.
That's what I thought.
You give me, is this the logo? That's going in the credits?
That's the logo, yeah, baby.
Yeah.
So, we're known for more than crazy ex-girlfriend, that's the big thing. We're moving up. Any other questions?
No, I, well, um, I, I think we're, we should be good, uh, them wanting the extra hour is not a big deal, since they're doing it in the middle of the summer, you don't get dark till 8:30 anyway. I, I mean, I mean, it's no big deal to go to 10 o'clock, you know, you're only going to be there for a month. I, I actually have no issue with it and I wish you the best of luck.
Oh, thank you. I, I, thank you so much.
Is there a motion?
Let me, before you make the motion, let me read the, there is a resolution here because there's findings that are required. And so, the resolution number would be 19-5989.
Make a motion to throw this microphone out? Make a motion to approve?
Okay, we have a motion by...
I'll second that motion.
Second by Kennedy. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Holtz? Oh, Commissioner Holtz? Commissioner Heung?
Yes.
Commissioner Kennedy?
Aye.
Commissioner Hockes?
Aye.
And Chairman Reddles?
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. We look forward to, uh, the shooting and the movie and, uh, all the good stuff and it was a nice meeting you.
Yeah.
We will do that. We have your schedule. We'll be looking for that catering truck.
Yes. For times lunch.
Yeah, that's, that can ask, they can ask.
I also like to add that we have a kids, our first West Covina kid film festival this coming July, I think July 25th, here, um, on the city area. So, yeah. Thank you for coming to West Covina, so. Thank you for coming to West Covina, so.
All right, thank you very much. You may.
You may.
Yeah, that, that was, you were the excitement for tonight, so that's about it. You're welcome. Thank you for coming. All right, now that takes care of the hearings. Non-hearing items. Item number four is fiscal year 2019, 2020 capital improvement program filing of conformance with the general plan. Mr. Anderson.
Well, you read that like it's kind of a mundane thing, huh? After. Well, yes, this is something that we, we do annually. It's required by state law that you look at the capital improvement program and determine it's conforming, it's conforming with the general plan. We have findings for the planning commission, we have a resolution before you with findings to state that. I'm not gonna go through everything in the list. It's on the capital improvement program for next year. But I'll cover the general categories. There are general improvements, there are building improvements, which are generally restrooms in the next year's CIP. There are park improvements, there are street improvements, there are traffic improvements and there are utility improvements. And then we go on down into the second page and we provide some of the actions and policies that are in the general plan under our prosperous community. These are sections of the general plan. Our prosperous community has some, our accessible community has others, and our resilient community still others, and then finally our active community. So we think those are all, that the proposed CIP projects are consistent with those actions and policies listed. We don't think there's any environmental issue here. This is basically approving a kind of a paperwork trail. There are, is a possibility that some of these projects could require some kind of environmental review when we go forward with the project and we will deal with that at that time. So in conclusion, we are recommending that you adopt a resolution that finds that the proposed capital improvement plan is in conformance with the general plan.
Thank you. Any questions of staff or any questions on the report?
Yes, I have a.
Yes, Commissioner.
I have a question though. I mean, there's a lot of listing in here. I mean, how long has staff been working on that? Like, for example, the new projects for fiscal 2019 to 2020?
Well, that's a very good question. I would, I would say, first of all, understand these are, these are what we used to call public works. They're engineering projects, they're not planning projects. But some of these have been in the works for several years. So the CIP projects that we have next year, the CIP actually has projects for the following year. So many of these have been in works for a long, long time. I, so it's, there's a range. There's probably some that, that have come in the last year. There's probably some that we've been trying to figure out a way to finance for five, maybe even ten years. And, and just to also make sure, you're not approving these projects. That's not your role as a planning commissioner. You don't approve public works projects. You approve private projects for the most part. What you're approving is that it's in conformance with the general plan.
When you say conformance with the general plan, can you go into a little bit more details in terms of what you mean by that?
That's a good question. No, it, it, this is one of these things that I'm not even sure why state law has us do it. But state law has us do it, so it must be really wise and all-knowing that we do this. What it basically means is that we're, we're not approving something that is not, that is against or anti what the general plan's goals are. So the general plan basically has a goal of improvements to the community and the CIP is basically improvements. But let's say the general plan was suggesting that, you know, Azusa Avenue remain a thoroughfare and, and we had a CIP project to, for some reason, remove Azusa Avenue. That would be opposite to what the general plan was requesting to do. So the general plan is fairly open. There's, you know, it's, it's, it's open to interpretation and subjective opinion. So it, it isn't very narrowly confined. So I know I'm using weird words and it's not very, it's all kind of nebulous. That's kind of how this, this system works. I don't know if I was helpful with that, Commissioner Hing at all.
Any other questions of staff? Would any member of the public, in other words, you two guys, wanna speak on this item? You two commissioners that are on your own time? Apparently no one wishes to speak from the public. Okay, so is there a motion?
I can read the resolution.
Please.
I can read the resolution number nineteen dash five nine nine zero.
Is there a motion?
I can make the motion, I can approve it.
Motion by Kennedy.
I second.
Seconded by Hockes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No, five oh. All right. Moving on to the last agenda item is item number five, which is a study session that we've kind of bumped over for a couple of meetings until we had a full commission and counting to five, we have a full commission. So it's a study session on our design review subcommittee guidelines regarding two-story additions tonight. Mr. Anderson, ready?
Okay, so this was something that has been, was, we discussed with a study session some months ago now. And the idea was that we have guidelines that are in place and I believe that the last time they were reviewed was 2010, I believe is the date on the document. So in that discussion, it was kind of thought, well, maybe it's a good time to go back through those. Not necessarily, I don't think anybody was suggesting or wanted to go back through to, to make a change, anything specific, but to look at them in sort of with new eyes and determine if these are good guidelines. Understanding that the staff uses these guidelines, I think in a, our goal is to use them in a very efficient manner. So as we had the house here tonight, we're, the idea is here's the guidelines, meet the guidelines and you're gonna get approved. It's kind of our, our goal to have predictable outcomes. So predictable outcomes, you follow the, the rules, you're gonna get approved. You don't follow the rules, you're gonna have some problems, there're gonna be some challenges. So it, that being said, that's why we think this is a very important tool and document. And it's very important, it's, it's important for us to be able to provide the information to the public so that they can get that predictable outcome. It's, it's incumbent on the planning commission who also have members that sit on the subcommittee to make sure that these are the goals that they want because you guys are the approvers, we're the, just the people who communicate with the public. And both of those are very important aspects, but really it's most important for you all to be the ones who make the decisions on what these guidelines are. So what I'm gonna do is kind of go through the guidelines in a, in a step-by-step manner. I think there are fourteen, eleven, there's eleven guidelines. It's, well, I'm sorry, let me go back one second. These are the second story guidelines. We have second story guidelines and first story guidelines. The first story guidelines are kind of more general and, and do affect second story too because they're more about cosmetic treatment. Whereas the second story is about massing, how the mass should be, especially in the situations where you're putting a two-story house, like we were talking about tonight, in a single-story neighborhood. What should the massing questions be? So I'm just gonna read through them and some of you have been part of my performances for code, for code amendments and I'm gonna kind of treat it like that. I'm gonna read through and then I'm gonna pause and, and if there's, if there's any discussion or questions, then that's the time to have the discussion. I'd rather, I'd rather take each one on its own. And that way when we pass one, we can just keep going. If we don't, and if we wanna end before we're through all eleven tonight, that's fine. We can put it on the next available agenda. So there's no rush here. I want everyone to, to be comfortable and I wanna engender as much, if there's, if there's a need for discussion, I wanna engender that. Okay, so the first one is design the two-story house or addition so that all setbacks, including second story, have been met. So that's basically saying no variances, don't request the variances, meet all the second, all the setbacks. And then plans must indicate parkway width to verify compliance of second story setback. That's on the front. Sometimes there's confusion about where the front property line is because of that, that parkway width, which is actually area owned by the city. So that's the first one. That was a dramatic pause to see if there's any comment. So if there's no comment, we'll go to the second one. In an area that is predominantly one-story, consider reducing the size of the second story in relation to the ground floor. A smaller second floor will not appear as massive or boxy. Plate height should be consistent with the first story of the house. So I'll stop there for a second, make sure we know what we're talking about. So you have two blocks, one on top of the other. To reduce massiveness in a one-story neighborhood, you make the small, the, the top one smaller than the bottom one. Because if, in that, to do that, you have to have increased setbacks on the second floor, right? If you have them the same size, you're not gonna have any setbacks, it's gonna be straight up and down. And it's very boxy and it doesn't, it has what we call a vertical articulation. It's a vertical-looking building as opposed to a horizontal. One-story, you have a horizontal articulation. So that's, that's our suggestion there.
I have a, I have a quick question. Is there a stronger word that we can use than consider?
Encourage. We could say encourage.
I think encourage is better.
Okay.
Consider kind of leaves it open-ended.
Yeah. It is, it is kind of a weak word. You're right, it's more like think about this. But encourage, I, I'll probably add, I'll probably change that sentence a bit, but I'll, I'll use the word encourage. It's encourage that you or something like that. Okay. I also wanna talk just a minute about plate height because that's not necessarily something that everybody knows what we're talking about. So the, the plate height is the, the distance between the floor and the ceiling of a floor. And, you know, if you go to New Orleans or something, some, one of those southern places, the plate heights are very tall, you know, they have like fourteen-foot plate height sometimes. So you're in a room, it just changes the, the room. But, and, and over the past, I don't know, ten, fifteen years, there's been a lot of change in sort of the market ideas on what plate height should be. And, and all that's fine, we don't really have a problem with plate height. It does affect the overall height of the house and when you have a twenty-five-foot height limit, it, it, it's kind of constraining. But the problem is, and we've had this happen, that people have come in with a plate height that's eight foot, which is a standard plate height for probably all the houses most of us have seen, and then they wanna do a second story with a ten-foot plate height. That makes an awkward-looking house. It, it's, it looks upside down and, and it's awkward-looking. You can tell when you look at it, there's something off about it. So that's why that's there. If they have a ten-foot plate height, hit, put a ten-foot plate height on the second floor. If you're building a two-story house, put both ten-foot. But if you have an eight-foot plate height on the first story, don't put a ten-foot on the second floor or nine-foot, it needs to be the same. So that's what that's about. So I'll pause again and then we'll go to the next one, number three. New two-story additions can result in privacy impacts to neighboring properties. Consider designing the second story to reduce or eliminate the need for windows on the side elevations. This is what we just talked about tonight. High windows that allow light in but restrict views onto neighboring properties may also reduce privacy impacts. Any thoughts, comments on that? All right, we'll go to the next slide here, which is the next three. In an area that is predominantly one-story, the elements of the house usually emphasize the horizontal. Modern, many modern two-story designs emphasize the vertical through two-story porches with tall columns, tall windows, and two-story front elevations with no horizontal breaks. These elements are generally out of character with a one-story neighborhood. The, the best example I can give of that is, is that, is the sort of the plantation-looking house or the Roman columns with the two stories that go straight up. And we've had people come in and propose that in one-story neighborhoods and we try to talk them out of that. The guidelines don't, don't say you can't do it, they can propose and it comes before you. But again, predictable outcomes, if they, if they design in this, then we can go forward. I also want to make sure that we all understand that this West Covina has many different neighborhoods. And while most of our neighborhoods are probably predominantly ones, are either all one-story or predominantly one-story, we do have neighborhoods, especially on the south side, that are predominantly two-story. And some of these guidelines like this one don't apply in those situations. These are in neighborhoods with one-story, predominant one-story, not in every neighborhood. Okay, so that's, that's number four. I'll go to number five. When adding a second-story elevation in a one-story area, consider providing a significant second-story setback on the front elevation. By setting back the second story from the first story, the front of the house will fit better in the context of a one-story neighborhood. And, and the house we had here tonight, they actually did that. They set back the front story and that, that was probably helpful in providing that horizontal articulation. Now I note that I'm using this, that we have used the same word consider in this one. And I don't know if we wanna beef that up to encourage.
Well, my view is I think we should be consistent and I would use encourage on all of these. I mean.
Okay.
That's my view.
Okay, all right. We will, I will try to do a word search on that and, and change all those. All right, number six. In an area that is predominantly one-story, the addition of second-story balcony, especially in a flatland neighborhood, can have an effect on privacy. In these areas, balconies and rear yards are discouraged. That, that's, flatlands, in the hillside areas, that, that doesn't, it's not the same because those people don't have as much expectation of privacy anyway because usually there's a house above them looking into the yard, no matter how the house is designed. Okay, no comments on that one. We'll go to seven. When designing a second-story addition, consider that all sides of the second story are visible. Window treatment on second-story windows is encouraged. Okay. Go to the next one. This, this plays right into tonight's discussion. This is a good night to have this discussion, actually. Discuss your proposed house or addition with adjacent neighbors. An administrative use permit or conditional use permit requires written notification to all property owners and residents within three hundred feet. So that, that is something that is in the guidelines. We, we generally encourage them as when we meet with them. But as, as the chairman pointed out, we can't force someone to do it. We can only strongly advise. Okay, if no comments on that. Landscaping, the next one. Landscaping that is removed or destroyed during construction, during the construction process shall be replaced prior to the final inspection. So that's kind of a guideline. It's usually a condition of approval as well. And then the last two. Provide the city-owned parkway widths for the strip of property between the private property and the street. This area is to allow for sidewalks or widening of the street. So I believe that I've been told by our, by our engineering folk that every, almost every city street has a parkway. There are some that have very little, but they almost, I think almost to a, a street, they have a parkway. Not all of them have sidewalks, that doesn't mean they don't have a parkway. So the front property line, when you get the dimensions of a property, they're measured from the front property line, not from the curb, not from the back of sidewalk, they're measured from the front property line. So that's why, that's sort of been a mission in my life to try to get people to put that on there, which I haven't achieved that mission, but that's something we hit very hard because it can really mess them up if they have the wrong front setback.
For some reason, you know, all the time I was on design review, that's the one item that's always there, provide parkway width. I mean, for some reason they don't, it's not part of their normal procedure, I guess, in, in laying out a plan.
It's one of the most consistently missed things and I'm not sure I fully understand it either because most of those people doing plans do them all the time. But, but we, we, that's something we need to be careful on, but it's, it's in here. So, and then lastly, in an area that is predominantly developed with rear-entry garages, no garage doors shall be installed on the front of the house. So you, some of you are shaking your heads like, West Covina is kind of unique in my experience. This rear-entry garage thing, I think was something West Covina liked back in the 50s or 60s. And so there are neighborhoods that pretty much, that's all they have, and they, they developed it that way, so that you wouldn't see garage doors, so that garage activity would be behind. That, that, and that's a guideline, you know. There, there are some discussion points there, because this is predominantly, what's predominantly mean? Is it half, is it three-fourths? So that we have, that's not to say that there haven't been things approved where a garage door has been put on the front elevation in, in, in a house that's built that way, it just wasn't generally in a predominant, a predominant, a neighborhood that's predominantly developed with those. Okay, so that gets us through the guidelines, any, I'll, I'll pause again, any comments on anything here?
Any comments? Everyone is diligently reading their report. Commissioner Hanks?
I guess, I do have a few comments. I guess start with number 11. Regarding the garage door, nowadays, you know, we have more than one car. Sometimes, even though it's in the backyard, it makes it very difficult to arrange the lots in with the turnaround curve of 25, 26 feet. If the lot is smaller than 50 feet, that's not possible, because the garage width needs to be 20 feet, I believe, minimum. But the garage itself, the garage, I'm sorry about the voice, but the garage itself needs to be 20-foot wide. Then you have to set back, the size setback, normally five, that's 25 already. And if you require 25, 26-foot, that's the entire lot. So it makes it really difficult with property that has lot that is smaller, meaning the under 50 feet, to be able to accommodate. Even if they want to, it's not, it won't fit the code to have a garage.
To have a rear-entry garage?
Correct.
Okay.
Because of the door, so that's something that we need to, I'm not sure how we're going to wood it, so that we also take care of the lot that are under 50 feet wide.
Well, keep in mind that what we're talking about here is houses that already have the rear-entry. In, in my career, in the last 30 years, I, no, no one, I've never seen a rear-entry garage constructed. So I think what we have is, we have a lot of rear-entry garage in neighborhoods, lots of rear-entry garages that are already out there. The question is, can they flip those and put the garage door on the front elevation? Is that, is, are we going to allow that in the neighborhood? That, that's the question. And so the guideline is not the code, guideline just doesn't say they can't do it. And we don't have any guideline, when people are building a house, they can, they can put the garage however they want it, you know.
But if they put it how they want it, and our guideline is to put it in the rear, most likely we won't approve it.
No, no, I'm not, okay, let me be clear, I think maybe misunderstanding the guideline. The guideline isn't saying put it in the rear. It's saying, I have a neighborhood of 20 houses on a street. Every single one of those houses has a rear-entry garage, and the guy in the middle wants to change his, so his garage door's on the front elevation. That's what's being asked. And there are neighborhoods like that, there's not a lot, but there are neighborhoods that have almost all the, and, and I could...
Well, one of them's Azusa Avenue. Azusa Avenue, you know, to Cameron, there's an alley, and all the garages are, enter through that alley, and there's absolutely no front garages on Azusa in that area. That would be... Yeah, but on that stretch of Azusa, yeah, okay. That, you know, you would never have a front garage, I mean, I can't even imagine it on Azusa.
Yeah, so I, I think that what we're getting at is, is existing houses, when they're modifying existing houses, not when they build houses. They can, they can talk to us about whatever layout they want when they build a house. This is just when they're modifying, and it's, the, the point here is, the point that, that, we put this in, this was an, actually, this was a later addition, this wasn't one of our earlier ones, we put this in later. But the point is that, the, the idea here is that you be, that what, when you modify your house, that you're consistent with the way the other houses look. That, that was the point of it.
And that kind of ties in with the rest of it, you know, as far as being out of character, that would be out of character.
Yes, that, that's the idea.
Yeah. Any, anything else? Any other comments? Commissioner Holtz? You want to get that to work? Can we get a technician down here, please?
Some of the houses, yeah, drive-through.
No, we, depending on how that's done, it might not even go to subcommittee. Because usually what happens there is there's a garage door already, and they just propose to put a garage, like, in the back, and that doesn't come to subcommittee. So, yeah, people do that occasionally.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Hakes?
On number two, regarding encouraging reducing the size of the second story in relation to the ground floor, something we dealt with tonight. Certainly, like better to use the word encourage, but are there, you know, are we really in, you know, really in all cases expected to make our, a judgment call on what we consider to be appearing as massive or boxy or can we consider, you know, putting more, more of a, well, better or well-defined constraint in terms of some sort of numerical ratio on second-story, you know, size relative to the first, first story?
That's a, that's a good question. I, I don't know that I know the answer, I mean, that's an, you know, what's appropriate is the question. What's appropriate for West Covina today is the question. And, and what's that old saying about pornography? I can't, I can't define it, but I know it when I see it. And it's kind of, that, the, design can sort of be like that, you know. You, you can design something that might not meet the numbers, but when you look at it, hey, it works pretty well. And then other times, it does, it meets the numbers, but it doesn't look that good. So, you know, design, there is a subject, a subjectivity to design. Now, when you, when you review a CUP, a conditional use permit or an administrative use permit, there are findings that you have to make, and the findings aren't the same as the, the guidelines. The guidelines are sort of directions on, hey, you want to get approval in a fairly expedient manner? Follow the guidelines, that, that's what the guidelines are for. But you, as the commission, when you approve something, you, you're making the findings, which are things like, the lot and proposed development is consistent with the general plan of zoning, the development utilizes building materials, colors, and schemes in a roof style, and is harmonious in scale and mass to the surrounding residents, is, is development is sensitive and not detrimental to convenience, is safety of circulation of pedestrians, those kind of things. So I don't know that, one response I have is that, you know, even if they don't meet the guidelines in some aspect, it doesn't mean that the, the subcommittee or the planning commission can't make a statement and say, well, in this case, that works. And, and that would be fine, as long as they, as long as, when it goes before the, the commission, that you can make those findings.
Well, I, I guess what I'm, my objective would be to avoid to avoid appearing arbitrary as much as possible. And, and I, like you made that, that analogy, I think I know when I see architectural pornography, and I can, and I'm not going to like that either.
Right, right.
So, so that's what I'm trying to figure out, if there's, there's a way to come up with, you know, some sort of modification to the guidance that will help, you know, you know, you know, create a, some parameters for what goes too far, and, and so that you can say, yeah, you know, your ratio of, of, you know, you did what you needed to do for the setback, you're, you're okay, you're okay with, you know, the, you know, the, you know, the lock coverage percentage, but it's still too massive, you know, because it went beyond this particular parameter.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think, yeah, and this is, you know, Greg, we've been wrestling with this thing since these things came into being, and Herb's probably, well, and Don may remember that far back. And this has been a wrestling match to try to figure out, because we, we've been, our goal, and the previous director, we used to, me and him used to kind of sit and go, well, what? The, the, the one parameter that I can see that might be helpful is the one we looked at tonight, where the house was 1.9 times the size of the average house.
And that's what I was thinking, was that somehow that, that somehow that came into play, but that was one, you know, that was 1.9 times the size of the original house, but to me, it was more about the proportion of what was on the second floor to the, to the first floor.
Well, but those both have something to do with each other, right?
Yeah, they do, yeah.
Because I think that house was at 35% lock coverage, so there was no more...
Yeah, and they couldn't go anywhere else.
Yeah, so they'd only go up, so there, there is, there is an equation, some kind of weird mathematical equation that's there. That, what I would say about the, the measuring that, and it's, what we're, what that, that measurement is, that ratio is the average size of the houses that we surveyed compared to the proposed house. So, again, we get back to the subjectivity, well, who picked which house we're going to survey? Well, of course, we picked them, but we're trying to pick the ones that are the most affected by the house. You could do it simply by doing a 300-foot radius, but you're going to have more houses then. And, and when you do a 300-foot radius, sometimes you end up with a house, you know, like, two blocks away that just hits the corner, and you're measuring that house, and it doesn't have anything to do with the neighborhood you're talking about. The other problem is, as in this one, when we did the, there was a large house there that we, I don't know that was in the survey, but it sounded like it might have been bigger than the house that we're, that was before us tonight. So while it was 1.9 times larger than the average house, it may not be larger than the biggest house. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So this, this, these are the confusion thing, that's why we started giving that statistic probably 10 years ago or more with the measuring it, because I think that's a useful statistic, but it is still, you've still got to kind of take it out of the box and look at it and see how, what else is going on around there that might, that might make that number not as important in some situations while it is important in another.
Yeah. I think because of the character of, of the vast majority of homes in, in majority neighborhoods in, in West Covina, that, you know, maybe there is something achievable in terms of, in terms of addressing the proposition of future, you know, you know, current and future property owners coming up with the idea of second-story additions that is going to, you know, mushroom into, you know, one monstrosity after another. And that's a big concern of, of mine personally, having seen how that's played out in other cities not so far away. And so if there's, if there's some thinking that we can get, you know, injected into the design review guidelines that, that gets future commissioners to think, you know, this, here's this guidance on second-story additions, and, you know, and if they, you know, if they can formulate, you know, what that, you know, what that means and why it wa, and why it was put into the design review guidelines, it, it, you know, it might, you know, influence, you know, their thinking to, you know, continue with, you know, with that approach. They're certainly welcome to change it in the future, too.
Yeah.
But, but we don't have anything that really, you know, guides them to think about, to give any consideration to the idea of preserving the nature of, of the homes and neighborhoods that, the way they are now. And, and I think, I'm sure there's, you know, there's some communities out there in some other not-so-distant Sangre Valley cities that wish they had done something about that before it got out of hand.
Yeah. Well, and you may have some other comments. One way to do that, and I, I think that, as we discussed this tonight, part of the reason that some of the guidelines say consider is because we were treading carefully. So we were saying consider. So one way to do that might be to put it, to come up with a number, I'll just throw out two numbers, 1.75 or 2, and, and really make that light. And consider designing the house so it's no larger than two times the size of the average house. And it's light, but it gives them some direction to work with, so that they don't come in with something that's 2.5. They might come in at 2.1, but they're probably not going to come in at 2.5 then. And that's fine, I'm, I'm just throwing numbers out.
But, yeah, I see what you're saying, and that's kind of what I'm aiming at, right? Because there's just so much wiggle room in the language, it doesn't really get people to think about what, what we're trying to achieve. Give the example of tonight, you know, the, myself tonight, you know, me? That was, I, I, that was never given my, I did, I did not want to see a home after the other getting transformed in that manner. That's the sort of thing we could get out of it. So, I'll sleep on that. Hold that over for a while, if that works, maybe there is a number to consider.
I actually encountered this, actually with one of my neighbor's daughter. And, and other, other areas that I encounter, I had friends that live in area that the square footage of the house nowadays, in the past, in their late 1900, is only under 1,000 square foot. So for today's time, in Riverside or San, San Bernardino area, or Orange County, 2,500, I don't really know the figure, but it seems like home that are 2,500, 2,500 square foot, they consider as an average home. Versus a medium home might be more toward the 3,000 square foot. So we also, because we're in the inner city, and land is nowadays is very expensive. The only way to build it with, especially the smaller lot where we have in the area, and even though this existing house, it's really only 1,400 square foot. So do we consider 1,400 square foot too big already? Or do we consider 2,500 square foot, you know? So we also need to be at least careful how we want to encourage homes and home size to be. It tend to be that nowadays, people tend to want a little bit larger home. That's why they would put more money into, and obviously, even though the 1,400 square foot, it may cost half a million dollar in, in West Covina. That's all they can afford, and that's all they can buy. So the only way to get a little bit more square footage is to add on to it. So in this planning commission, in the past, we had approve in certain area 10,000 square foot, 12,000 square foot. So is that too massive? And yet, at the same time, when we're going to a certain area in West Covina, we're saying 1,400 square foot might be too massive. It's a subjective area that we also need to look at and say, hey, certain area of West Covina, we can only allow the increase to, basically, if it stay under 1,000 square foot, just stay under 1,000 square foot. I actually had a neighbor that I was surprised, her daughter, actually. When she, her parent moves into our area, it was 2,500 square foot in that area, the average house around there. But to her daughter, who's 60 years old now, and the parents have been living there over 60 years, who currently live in Orange County area, and she said, that is really small. And I'm thinking, that's huge for us. So I, even the same family that she used to live there, grew up there, and her parents still live there, to her, that area is considered small. So at this moment in time, I'm saying that in the old days, people are living in that, that square footage, and that's considered large. My parent bought a house that's 900 square foot, and it fit all six of us just fine. And we lived just fine with everyone, and we were happy, we were comfortable, and everyone's great. But as they have a little bit more money, they tend to think, or we tend to think, not a whole lot, but they add on to it, they can't just very well go and buy a 2,000 or 3,000 square foot somewhere else. So they add on to it. So one of us, or each of us could have our own room, which I actually appreciate and love. And so I don't, at the end of the day, you know, we also have to look at the resident's, current resident, and also see what it is that they want with their existing situations, and the dynamic of the resident is and will be changing. I mean, my parents' age with four kids or five kids is no longer, I mean, nowadays, they only really have only two kids or one kid, or, I really don't have an answer. I think moving on in the future with this type of subjective issues or rules that we have to follow our guideline, we also have to look at the dynamic of the people who live in our community as well in terms of, and especially also the aging community, that, you know, by 2020 or 2030, 2030, 25% of our population will be aging. I've seen my neighbor gone through, I guess I'm the babies that are living in that neighborhood. I felt that when I first moved in, I loved it, because everyone's retired, and they're walking around, and they're watching my house as well. So it's just wonderful in that sense. But I also see them grow in age to 90, it was 90-something, and they no longer can drive, and they do need help, simple as go into the grocery and grab some grocery. These are simple things that they no longer can do, but they also like to stay in place. At the same time, we also have communities that are changing as well. People are moving in with kids, and they need more space. So I, we also need to have a balance when we make these rules, and, and we also need to look at the populations, what, what is needed, whether it's going to be more into the multicultural or multi-generational, one or two or three generations living under the same roof. Not that they wanted it, but it's a necessity sometime that you have to live in that situation. Because having your kids or having a distant family living together, or family livings together, it can improve the quality of their lives. I can't say for myself, because right now I don't need it, but I don't know if my neighbor might need it. So that's something I also need to, you know... So that's something I also need to, you know, look at overall when we're making these rules for the future as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things that we always have to keep in mind is we, we want investment. We want people to invest in their houses, especially, I mean, if we look at the neighborhood that we were talking about tonight, I think all of us would say, we want, we want people to invest in that. Well, to invest, they've got to be able to expand. So there's, there's just got to be this balance between encouraging investment and, and revitalizing areas and not overbuilding, maybe I shouldn't use that word, not building to an extent that it, it somehow hurts the neighborhood. It's not in context with the neighborhood. So, and, and that, that's a real, it's a dance, right? It's not a, it's not a, it's not rocket science. It's, it's a dance to try to figure out what, what works where and, and, and what doesn't.
Yeah, Commissioner Hockes?
Yeah, yeah, what Commissioner Heng was speaking to are all things that I would very, generally, I would very much agree with across the board. And I think probably what, what I was speaking to was maybe the flip side of the same coin, but in the end, it's, it is what we, I think what we both agree on, it's, it is about a balance. It is, and, and I was only speak, I was primarily speaking to the concern of not making sure that we weren't going out of balance with, with ideas on, you know, residential retrofits that, you know, just get out of hand. And one point that really resonates, you know, true with me personally, and your comment about, you know, the aging population is, it's very true about how that will have to need to be accommodated in terms of how people, you know, you know, care for elderly family members and by, and to do so might mean, you know, that you provide, you know, that space for them in your, in a home that, that needs that retrofit, needs the, that extra space. And that's largely going to be achievable in, in, probably in most cases without, without, you know, going to, to any other extreme that will, you know, take a, a residential dwelling and make it go to that extreme of being out of place for, you know, for its setting. So I, so the balance is achievable and, and meeting a lot of the, and meeting a lot of the, the social goals of, you know, what it's going to take to trans, you know, when you have to transform, you know, residential structures to meet a lot of these goals. I think it's kind of an all of the above thing. I think that it's, the balance can be, can be met. I don't think that, that anything is mutually exclusive between meeting what, the needs of what, you know, people or, you know, their family needs are and, and preserving, you know, the character and quality of neighborhoods, you know, both can be achieved together.
Well, I've, everything I've heard, I'm pretty much in agreement with.
So why don't I try to bring this to a close? I've got a little bit of information here.
Let me just make sure that no one from the public wants to be heard on this. You two publics, no? No publics, okay. We, I'll go ahead and close the public portion. Go ahead.
Yes, so we'll, we'll make those changes. We'll bring it back to you because what, what is, is best is if we can have a vote of the commission, then we'll, we'll put the date on, the new date on there so that people can see, hey, this is fresh, it's not something approved in 2010. And, and, and the, the idea that Commissioner Hockes brought up, I think is one worthy of consideration. And I'm not saying that you put a lid on it and say that definitely you can't go over this, but it would be, from staff's selfish point of view, it's helpful for us, too, because when people come in and we, and they start proposing things that seem to us to be maybe too far, it's hard for us to reel them back in if they've met all the other standards. So it, it has been a sort of a, a kind of a, a juggling act, even with the planning commission comes before and they, well, even like tonight, well, it's too big. Well, what, what, what is too big? And, and I, you, we don't really, I, I would encourage you, we, we have to let them know because you don't want to be going back and forth five times, oh, that's too, still too big, oh, that's still too big. And, because if you don't give them a number, they might reduce it 20 square feet. And then, you know, because they're, they're trying to get right across the line where you're comfortable and they don't want to go any further than that. So these are questions and so, and this isn't necessarily the end of this, right? We can get this done, we can, we can consider it, and if you want to have another study session even the next six months or something, ask for it, we can have this conversation again. I think, I think no matter when we do that, we're just going to have to choose a number and put it in there and then kind of test it. And we need to put it in soft and we need to, so it's, it's, it's a consider, not an encourage or a require, but anyway. So I think I have the direction I need for now, so I think we can conclude this and, and go on with the agenda. And I'll bring this back once I, once we've done the number, I'm sorry, once I've changed the document, I'll bring it back to you for a vote.
So we don't need a motion on this, on anything?
You don't need a motion on it right now.
Okay. So very good. Thank you all very much for that. That was excellent. And right now we are at commission reports, comments miscellaneous. Anyone? Anyone? Bueller? Bueller? No? I have one thing. You know, my favorite little place is Riro's Burritos and I'd love to have a burrito there one day, but I don't know if I'll live that long. But again, if we can contact them, because good old graffiti has reared its ugly head over there. And, you know, somebody put on Facebook that they're opening up in three weeks and that was like six weeks ago, so I don't think they're going to make that goal, but again, there's, you know, graffiti on the windows and, you know, I don't know when they ever go by there, but if we could contact them, because it's been there for a while.
We can, we can do that, reach out to them, find out if they're still going forward.
All right, thank you. So we're at community development director's report.
We have the forthcoming. We don't have any items for the June 25th. We may not have any items for the first meeting in, in, in July. That's still kind of up in the air, but we will be in touch with you one way or the other, just so the subcommittee members know that that doesn't apply to them. We do have items for the next subcommittee. And then there's subcommittee minutes there. That concludes my presentation.
All right. And any city council action?
Nothing to report on city council action.
Yeah, I didn't think so. And thank you for handing out the, the handout as far as our...
The maps.
Map where we live in the radius.
Yeah, that, that was for, that's for the planning commissioner's edification. So if something comes up, you can always contact us, if you have any questions, we can get you in contact with the city attorney to, to understand. It's very important that we don't break conflict of interest rules because it could put the whole city and whatever vote it was in jeopardy.
Right.
And usually, you know, there's enough of you to make a decision even if somebody has to recuse themselves.
Okay. Very good. If there's nothing else, then at 9:02, we stand adjourned. Thank you.